Okay, I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Before we go into the roll call, I would like to just have a moment of silence. We lost two firsts within the last week with the Village of Ashwabnon. And we lost our first administrator, Steve Kabaki, and we lost our first canine, Ole. So if we could have just a moment of silence for them. Thank you. Okay, roll call, please.
President Kardowski.
Here.
Trustee Service.
Here.
Trustee Paul.
Here.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Atkinson.
Here.
Trustee Krieger.
Here.
And Trustee Flukie.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge. And please remember our men and women throughout the world in uniform. I have no changes to the agenda. I need a motion to approve, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Six A, action on the minutes from the open and closed session of August 27th, 2024.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Number seven, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Must state your name and address. You're limited to five minutes. The board's role is to listen and not discuss the item. Personnel issues cannot be discussed nor individuals named, and the board is not able to take action at this meeting. Is there anybody who would like to comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Is there anybody who'd like to comment on something not on tonight's agenda? Moving on. Number eight, written communications and/or announcements. We have a great presentation from Green Bay Water on the water rate increases. Come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you for having us. My name's Brian Powell. I'm the general manager of the Green Bay Water Utility in 3020 Sandia Drive, Green Bay is my address.
Stephanie Rogers with Green Bay Water. My ad- my address is 6446 North Bay Shore, O'Connell.
Hey.
Doug Martin with Green Bay Water. My address is 2430 Leroux Lane in Ashwabnon, Wisconsin.
Welcome. Okay.
All right, well, thank you for having us. Like I said, my name's Brian Powell, the general manager of the Green Bay Water Utility. And then Doug Martin, our operations manager, and Stephanie Rogers, our business managers, are here with us to answer any questions you would have also. But I guess, Joel, you can forward the slide?
We are in the midst of training in the back room, so we're working through setting it up so that it actually shows on the screen. So bear with us.
No problem.
Brian, Doug, and Stephanie didn't realize that this many, these many people were interested in, in Green Bay Water Utility stuff. They're all here for you.
Yeah. Well, thank you all.
My wife would be so happy. I haven't had this many people pay attention to something like that in my entire life.
So maybe we're having more technical difficulties than we thought, so let me try it again.
And one other, one other, I should have looked up there and made sure my wife wasn't watching before I said that. Thankfully she isn't, so I won't get in trouble for that.
All right, there we go, Brian, Doug, and Stephanie. So I will forward on to the next screen.
All right, thank you. And I guess the, the first point I wanted to bring up and discuss is this is showing the, the rate history over the years since you first became a customer of ours in 2006. And as you can see, there'll be years where there's gaps, where there's a 0% increase, and then that'll go on for several years, and then we'll have a rate increase. Part of this is our agreement with Ashwabnon is there's two different types of rate cases that can be had in front of the Public Service Commission. One is a simplified rate case, which is basically the cost of living, and it's a lot less complicated of a, of rate increase to get. You can go in, get a simplified, it takes a much shorter period of time, like I said, and it's the cost of living, basically, for that year. Our agreement with Ashwabnon is that we, we cannot have a simplified rate case, it's a conventional rate case. So there's much more involvement with the PSE. A cost of service study is done. It usually takes eight to nine months for that rate case to go through. So that's why we don't do one every year, because otherwise Stephanie would be doing nothing but rate cases nonstop. So our goal is that we do a rate increase every three years, maybe four. Sometimes it's two, as you can see through the years. The longest is what we've just had now is the last rate increase we had was in 2020. So the increase now in 2024 that went into effect August 1st is four years since our last rate increase. So hence the 16.8% looks rather large, but it's really a 4% increase each year if you look at it in that regard. I guess, Joel, if you can go to the next slide, that'd be great. This slide here is actually just an attachment to our wholesale agreement with Ashwabnon. And this was made out in 2005 when we signed the agreement, which was giving a, a prediction of what the rates would be over the years. And the prediction was the show that both, there, there was a 3% rate increase every year, starting in 2005, what it would be at the end of 2030, which is when our actual agreement with you comes to an end, and then the Public Service Commission sets the rates at that point moving forward for you, independent of our rates. As you can see, if you look into year 2025, the rates were predicted to be $2.98 per thousand gallons. And if you go back to the last chart, you will see that our rates right now, just with the rate increase, is $2.98 per thousand gallons, and will carry through to 2025. So we're right exactly to the penny of what was predicted 20 years ago. So from that perspective, the average increase to Ashwabnon has been 3% a year for the last 20 years. And, Joel, I guess if you can move to the next slide? And kind of what I wanted to say is, we do not have any projects or anything in the foreseeable future that we would see would change that rate projections for the next five years. I think it's safe to say the last 20 years, it's been an average of 3%. We would foresee that happening over the next handful of years. In our regards, we don't have anything that's big for us as far as projects. It's the normal type projects. We, we literally just had a master plan done this year, which basically looks at what our system improvements are needed for the short term, midterm, and long term, which is, the short term's one to five years, midterm, five to 10, long term, 10 to 20 and beyond. And the improvements that were earmarked for our system are, are normal type projects for a system our size. There isn't anything like a filter plant improvement, another raw water line, another transmission line, nothing that's of, like a hundred million dollar project or 50 million dollar project. It's more elevated tanks, increasing the rate of our distribution replacement, different type projects like that, that are more standard, I would say, for a system like ours. We also just had a strategic plan done this year also, which goes out for the next three years, and there's nothing in that strategic plan or master plan that indicates anything of any major improvements needed that would be significantly large capital projects that would impact Ashwabnon's rates. And I guess that kind of plays into, right now, we're doing our, our budget. It's budget season right now, and our five-year CIP. And our five-year CIP is mirroring what was in our master plan and our strategic plan. So that's a long way of saying that we don't see anything in the next five years that would change the rate projections from what was done back in 2005. And I guess with that, I'm open to any questions, or Doug, Stephanie, if you have anything else to add?
No.
I, I think I just want to add just a little bit to echo what Brian said. You're, you're seeing a few different faces in, in different places, but the, the goal remains the same. Brian assumed the, the leadership role of the general manager in DePur, excuse me, in December of this year. He's been there over 25 years. When I worked at the Village of Ashwabnon, I worked with Brian hand in hand in the connection to, from Ashwabnon to Green Bay Water, has extensive knowledge, has the project management, all of the financial skills that, that the village looks for in, in a partner. Familiar face next to me, Stephanie was the finance director here at the village for a number of years as well. Brian mentioned we're going through budgets. The budget feels very similar at Green Bay Water as it did here at the Village of Ashwabnon. She has a, an eagle's eye on, on our budget and lets us know in the areas where we need to make adjustments and, and come into what, what the rates are, are telling us we need to be at. And then I assume the role of Brian's previous position as operations manager in December of this year. And, and all of our projects, like Brian said, everything that we have forecasted for the coming year and the next five years are pretty standard projects that we don't foresee any large impact to the rates. With that being said, Brian's always on the lookout at the various conferences and whatnot. PFAS is a big thing being discussed right now. We don't have a PFAS project, per se, coming up in the future. So those types of things are being looked into and analyzed so that we make sure that there isn't any surprises out there in the future. So, that's all I have.
So I'd say my only question is, is you mentioned that our agreement, you know, you can't do the, the audit every year, I understand that. Is there a possibility that that could be changed? The biggest issue that I see is a 16% jump. It's people that are on fixed budgets, fixed incomes, things like that. It ends up being a huge increase in, in a year, and all of a sudden their bills, and they're struggling with that. I have directly been told by residents that it's like, wow, it's gone up so much that it's putting a crunch on their budgets. You know, I'm not saying, okay, we should renegotiate a, a thing, but I think if there's a way that that could get leveled out, I think it would be much easier for people to absorb increases at a lower rate year over year. That would be my only comment.
Okay. The agreement states that Ash, or that Green Bay cannot go in for a simplified rate case, but Ashwabnon can.
Okay.
So what you could do is you could do a cost of living increase each year. The PSE allows that. So you could increase your rates based on the rates that you're getting charged from us. So you would be able to do that and even out your customers' bills then.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you know, our last meeting, we had the presentation from the sewer, N E W Water, and all of the rates everywhere are going up, and these are rates, these are costs that we can't absorb, you know, in, in our, in our budgets and our utilities. So unfortunately, they, they have to be. But I didn't realize that we could go in for a simplified on our own.
Yes.
To help, because I know many, many years ago, I'm going back, like in '07, '08, when N E W Water did a, a big capital improvement jump, and it was asked at that time if they could also do increases in, you know, shorter increments, and they said that they could not either, so.
Well, we're regulated by the Public Service Commission, so that's who sets our rates for that.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So we'll have to keep that on our radar.
Yeah, I think, just to add to that conversation, I mentioned that New Water was here last month to give their presentation. Green Bay Water was asked to come today to talk about their changes in rate structure. It's on the agenda for later to, to, tonight to discuss scheduling a special village board meeting to kind of talk through both presentations and then make a decision and a determination about what the village would like to do as it relates to these increases in wholesale costs back to the utilities. And if those are going to be passed through, we do have some capacity to pass through these rate increases from our wholesaler back to the customer without going through a simplified rate case. But we'll also be talking more long-term financial stability at that meeting as it relates to the rate structure and the possibility of doing these simplified rate cases more frequently, as well as a full rate case more frequently. I think Doug was here when we did our last rate case, was 2022, I think we completed that, and that was the first time we had done a full rate case in 16 or so years. So the village has also a pretty extensive history of trying to maintain a flat rate structure, and because of the changing economics of, of doing business, we're seeing the need to, to adjust our rates more frequently to, to meet that inflationary pressure.
Yes. I'll go ahead. Stephanie, I was just going to ask if, what an average homeowner's bill will go up when we're talking about a 16% increase?
Um, in Green Bay, because we have different rates than you do. Here in Green Bay, the average went up. I believe it was about $5 a month.
So obviously, it's different in Ashwabnon. Or comparable.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have the exact number, but it'd, it'd probably be comparable to maybe even less than that, just based on what our actual utility rate is here. But that, that we'll have in more detail when we schedule that special meeting.
You indicated there's no major expense coming in the next five years. Is there anything you know of now in the next five to 10 or beyond?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. There, there is not, right now, anything planned. Like I said, the master plan goes out to 20 years plus, and right now, our, kind of our flow rates into town have not exponentially increased, where we're kind of holding firm, if not seeing decreased water demand. So in reality, improvements over the years are projected due to decreased water demand. So like, as water demand increases, we need to increase the capacity of the filter plant, increase pumps at, at our lake station. But we don't have any of that foreseeable in the next 20 years because our usages are basically kind of flatlined out. So most of our work coming up is going to be maintenance type work, instead of, you know, I call it beefing up or adding capacity.
So I guess I'll, I'll ask you directly then, Doug. How's the pipeline up to Kiwanee? Is that all solid, or it doesn't, I don't know what the age of it is? That's kind of what I'm asking.
Yeah, the second pipeline was added in 2005.
That what it was?
Yep. Yep, the original line is from '57, and then the, the line, the second line I got put in was in 2005.
Okay.
And we have not had actually problems with, with either line. Obviously, you wouldn't expect problems with the new line, but even the one from '57 is holding up well.
Because I would think if there's going to be a major operations type of thing, it would be something there, or something would be happening with the line, but.
To your point and to Kelly's question, one of the things that, that the utility has done on the transmission main side, so from the, from the filter plant into town, there was a technology, it's called a smart ball, pipe diver technology, where a unit was sent through those pipelines to detect where there were problems, and those problems, problem areas are in, under design for getting replacement. The same type technology is planned as part of a capital improvement program plan. I think that was six to 10 years out to do that on the raw water lines coming from Lake Michigan to the filter plant. So it's a way of analyzing your pipelines and taking care of problems before they-
Preemptive, yeah. Yeah, like that.
It's a balance, if you will. Some, some communities decide to wait and just let the pipeline fail. There, there's another, maybe less costly option to find those problems and take care of them before they happen and extend the life of your pipeline.
Good.
Yeah, like Doug alluded to, you know, I, well, I like my fun facts and figures, so I'll kind of throw all, like, the findings of that. When we did the pipe diver project just a couple of years ago, out of 80,000 pipe segments, we found nine pipe segments that had distress to the wires, which comes to 0.1% of the whole pipeline. The national average is they usually find about 5% of pipes with distress when they do this type of technology. So what we chose to do is those nine pipes that actually have distresses, we're going to actually remove those pipes, like what Doug alluded to, and those pipe segments are actually 20-foot pipe segments, so we're going to go remove those individual pieces of pipe and replace them before we actually have any problems with them. So to that point, it's a very small percentage of the line that was put in in the 50s that were having any kind of impact or damage to. So it's a, it's very good news for us and for, for everyone involved.
Right.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? No? Hearing none. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Okay, number nine, action on the consent agenda. Consider Discuss Act on a Class B Beer License for Playful Pursuits LLC DBA Green Bay Acts. Consider Discuss Act Recommendation on the 2025 Salary and Wage Grade Matrix for Non-Represented General Employees and LTE Seasonal Wage Matrix. C, Receive and Accept August 2024 Public Works Department Monthly Report. D, Receive/Accept September Park Rec and Forestry Department Reports. E, Receive/Accept Budgeted Expenditures for Period Between 8/2024 to 9/18/2024. F, Receive/Accept August 2024 Financial Reports. And G, Receive/Accept August 2024 Investment Report.
Move to approve. There's no corrections or additions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Number 10, action items. 10A, Consider Discuss Act on a Preliminary Planned Unit Development, PUD Request for a Multi-Use Residential Development on Parcel VA-L333-2 Alice Pagel's LLC Property.
There we go. Thank you. All right, I'll share my screen, so bear with me a second. Okay. So the requested preliminary, you know, stressed preliminary PUD, Planned Unit Development, is a submittal by Robert Lee &amp; Associates as applicant for VHC Incorporated. Both representatives, Robert Lee and VHC Incorporated, are in the audience. They requested a preliminary Planned Unit Development review for the requested development you see up on the screen. I do want to mention that, again, this is a preliminary Planned Unit Development. A Planned Unit Development does consist of a two-step process. The preliminary Planned Unit Development to identify any major red flags, and then a final Planned Unit Development when the detailed subdivision plat, stormwater management plans, engineering plans, so on and so forth, are prepared and submitted along with the final plan, final Planned Unit Development. The proposed Planned Unit Development does include a mix of single-family homes, town homes, and multifamily apartment units. And just to point out where they are, the single-family homes that you see extend from Pagel's Place south, as indicated with the, I guess, kind of the clear parcels, for lack of a better term. Lot sizes are similar to what you see at Woods Edge. Town homes extend along the north side of future Pagel's Place. And then on the north side of that driveway, the original design did have town homes on that side of the driveway as well. Those have been changed to duplexes based upon comments heard at Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission regarding density of the development. In addition, one other change that did occur since Site Plan and Plan Commission is the addition of a berm along the, I guess it'd be the northern, north central part of the property behind the duplexes, provide some buffering from, to Arts Lane. The total development includes 46 single-family homes, again, smaller lots similar to Woods Edge, 24 condominium-style two-story town home units, 10 duplex units, and 64 conventional apartment units with the center detached garage that you see. There's also a stormwater pond, as indicated on the far east side of the development. From a transportation standpoint, you do see the extension of Pagel's Place to the east, connection with Pond's Edge Court to the south, and then a future street extending north through the privately held property to the north, connecting to Spirit Lane and West Main Avenue. Again, at some point in the future, that is unknown at this time, when exactly that could be connected. The Ashwabnon Site Plan Review Committee and Planning Commission both recommended approval of the preliminary PUD at their respective meetings. I do want to note, Planning Commission did recommend not connecting Pond's Edge Court to the new development until the final lift of asphalt is completed for the new development. Since Planning Commission review, I did touch base with Public Works and Public Safety on that concept. Both departments did have reservations on that due to the resulted inefficiencies for garbage refuse, recycling, rubbish, snow plowing, school bus, public safety connections, so on and so forth. I did receive a number of comments since the Site Plan Review Committee and Plan Commission, since a 121 notices were sent out to the neighbors regarding the development, along with a copy of the, the proposal. Did receive comments, one supporting development, provided construction traffic is restricted from private road in Misty Meadows Condo Development, request for the addition of a berm and landscaping between the development, Arts Lane, concerns regarding increased traffic from the development through the Woods Edge subdivision and Sand Acres Park, and concerns regarding potential property value impacts on Astro Court. Since writing of the staff report, I have received additional emails and phone calls regarding the project. I mentioned the change the developer has made to the proposed development, such as the berm and the reduction in density to include the, the duplexes. In reviewing a Planned Unit Development, we should always review our comprehensive plan to see, you know, is the proposed development consistent or, I guess, not inconsistent with the comprehensive plan as indicated in state statute. Housing goals we have for the development includes maintain and promote high-value residential infill at key locations abiding rivers, other natural amenities and key areas throughout the village that promote walkability in connections to commercial amenities. Should also note that there is actually a, a trail connection that extends the Sand Acres Trail north to, to Arts Lane and to the future West Main Avenue Trail. Additional goal, maintain and increase the availability of moderately priced housing, particularly so as to support families seeking long-term community, and encourage the creation of housing for active seniors who want to remain in Ashwabnon without the burdens of single-family homeownership. At the same time, facilitate the homeowner transition from these aging residents, leaving neighborhoods to new families and residents. Furthermore, the comprehensive plan does break the village up into different neighborhoods, district, and corridors based on similar characteristics. The site of the prou- requested preliminary PUD is located within the Sand Acres neighborhood, as indicated in the packet. The Sand Acres neighborhood is primarily residential in nature, and the comp plan includes tables that identify various land uses for the district as desirable, allowable, or undesirable with definitions of each. Desirable being they should be encouraged and support the desired character of the area. Allowable, are uses appropriate for the area but may require additional consideration to fit the vision. And undesirable, should not be encouraged unless there's specific consideration that should be considered. The table for the Sand Acres neighborhood includes residential, single-family as desirable. Single-family homes, again, are very similar to the Woods Edge development to the south. Residential two and three family and residential multifamily are both considered as allowable uses. So again, there were some revisions- So again, there were some revisions made to the original site plan based upon comments heard at that time to help further blend these uses into the neighborhood. Should the village board approve the planned unit development with conditions, which I'll identify in a minute, the final planned unit development will include a listing of the review objectives and how the proposed development is intended to meet those final PUD review objectives. In terms of recommended conditions of approval, I'll run through those briefly for the record. Submittal of a final PUD packet, submittal of a lighting plan with photometrics that has light trespass at no more than point-five-foot candles at property boundaries or to at least no more than currently exists on site. Inclusion of sidewalks on both sides of all public streets. All parking areas, landscape islands, and drive areas are to have curbing, either conventional curb pan or rolled. And this is a typo in there, and I apologize for that. Screen any rooftop or ground mounted mechanically units visible from the property boundaries, or that would be, obviously, Pagels Place rights-of-way. Use of fully concealed fasteners for any exterior wall panels. Approval of a development agreement between the developer and the village for the subdivision improvements. Meet all applicable requirements of the Ashwabandon Site Plan Review, all the applicable village ordinances. From engineering, submittal of detailed utility and civil plans with the final PUD packet. Submittal of detailed stormwater management and erosion control plans with the final PUD packet. Provide adequate access easement to the stormwater pond. From public safety, coordinate with Ashwabandon Public Safety regarding FTC and Keybox locations for multifamily units. Coordinate with Ashwabandon Public Safety regarding the fire hydrant locations and internal turning radii for multifamily units. From forestry, submittal of a detailed landscape plan and planting schedule with the final PUD. Front bike and pet identification of bicycle parking locations for the apartment buildings, and recommendation that those should meet the standards of the Association of Pedestrian and Bicycle Professionals. As I mentioned, the development team is in the audience. Do you have any specific questions for them? Otherwise, I'm happy to answer any question that you may have as well.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for staff?
Being on both those committees, it was brought up several things on what the committee members and some of the audience had. I give the developers a lot of credit for changing it to try and please you people on what was originally done. So I think what they're bringing forward is something that is livable. It certainly can help the village as far as development. As you know, we don't have a lot of land left anymore. So every parcel that we can develop on helps create a tax base to help you get the services that you're getting.
Anybody else? Can I ask a developer a question, or just as a staff?
Certainly. I'd recommend then the development team maybe go to the front table, please.
State your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, sit down, right? Craig Kastner, fifteen-hundred Waterford Drive, Village of Ashwabandon.
Okay.
Okay, my question is, could this development be phased in? So maybe the first phase could be the single-family homes, and then the second phase, either the multifamily and maybe the condos and the duplexes. A lot of calls are, emails that I've received have to do with traffic, the concern of traffic in the area. And if we'd wait on the multifamily and the duplexes until Spirit Way could go through, it would take a lot of that traffic out to West Main. So that's my question as a development, if that would be feasible for you to phase that until Spirit Way could be extended.
Good evening, Tracy. Yeah, I was actually thinking that, I mean, having the street go through would take a lot of pressure off the subdivision and the traffic count. I, I get it. Unfortunately, that part of the property is not for sale, so that's not something that we have been exposed to or had the option to pursue. That being said, in answering your question, one thing I can tell you, and I do have two representatives here from Robert E. Lee, who would do a lot of the designing of the subdivision. There's two options, and they can step in if we need to open it up when it comes to stormwater placement. If we did the entire development at once, we would have one stormwater pond located, and that's the current pond that you see on the map, which is not up there, but, which is outlot pond number one. So if we don't do it, it forces us to put two stormwater ponds in, and the first one would be up, I believe, located in the areas of lots twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, in that area. So that would be one of the considerations we'd have to take a look at if we did phase. To be honest, there's economics involved, and whenever you're developing, if we're going to purchase, you know, the sellers are going to want us to buy the whole thing. So until the rest of it is developed, and whatever that rest of the street might go through, we're still paying holding costs on land that we can't develop, right? So we'd buy the entire purchase, so, unless we could work out some kind of phased purchase to that point, which I really can't speak to at this point, just not enough information.
What if you just left, like, the multifamily off and, you know, left the condos and them in? Then you're lessening the amount of traffic a little bit, and phase that as a phase two. Would that be feasible? And do you have any idea, Craig, when Spirit Way would go through? Is there any timeline that you know of?
Tracy, I really don't. You know, in order for that, I mean, you know, I don't, you know, the sellers would have to put the property on the market. It's currently not on the market. You know, I really have no idea of what their intentions are. You know, maybe they're looking to sell in the future, or maybe they're just happy where they're at, and that's not on their radar screen at this time.
What's your timeframe in the project, Craig? When, you know, what, when would you, if it gets approved, when would you start? When would you, because obviously, there's a lot of building. How many years are you talking, a couple of years here?
I would probably think if, I, I would not think this would happen sooner than twenty-six. Obviously, we need to go through the municipal process for approval. Once we have that, we need to go through the rest of the transactional, you know, things, which I think, right now, would take us into spring of next year, March, probably. At that point, you know, the plat would have been done. We would want to go out for bids and get contractors to bid on the work. I really don't see construction happening sooner than twenty-twenty-six. And that would be with the start of the road. So I wouldn't even think construction would probably happen until late twenty-six, early twenty-seven, if I had to guess. And then from there, it's a little bit on-market absorption. You know, how the residential lots get absorbed into the, into the marketplace.
Makes sense.
LJ.
Yeah. Thanks.
Craig, do you have an approximate price that you're going to be charging for the ballpark?
On, on the homes?
On the homes.
We were talking about that earlier. You know, it's, right now, and it's always subject to, you know, the home buyer. You never know what they're going to want, but I would say estimated start would probably be four-fifty. And if there was homes in here that were touching six, seven, eight, I don't think that would surprise me, especially along the ravine. Some people, you know, want to build something a little nicer, so. I'd say range-wise, probably four-fifty to six-fifty, to give you something safe on the home sites.
And then the duplex units, I'm going to call them side-by-side.
Yeah.
So those and the townhomes are also, they would be a condo?
Everything would be, it would all be in a condo plat.
Okay.
Just because of the way it would be laid out. So we'd do one condominium unit owners' association that would exist for all of that. And if these were really kind of like twin dominiums or duplexes, they're really side-by-side, kind of two-unit condos.
Right, right. I, I know that, you know, like Tracy said, a lot of the concerns that we've gotten is the traffic. And I, I just was relating this morning when we did the Element Way Apartments. There's four buildings there. I'm averaging seventy dwelling units per building. That's two-hundred-and-eighty dwelling units. And I know that there was a lot of discussion about the traffic when that went in, and we were going to possibly talk about having a stoplight put at the corner of Marvell and Oneida. Excuse me. And we've, we've never had to do that. Now, that's two-hundred-and-eighty, and this one is a hundred-and-forty-four. And I know that it's logistically a little bit different, but, you know, there's always a concern about traffic. I think I have the worst traffic. I've asked for a blinky stop sign to get out of my driveway because I'm right across from the high school in the morning, between seven-fifteen and seven-twenty-five. It's a challenge, but, you know, I, I know that traffic is always a concern, but sometimes it, it isn't as bad as we think it is. And I know you're working, trying to get that property from that.
Yeah, it's something that, you know, we've thought about and just, you know, made some phone calls, but
Yeah.
It's a process like anything else.
Yeah.
You know, I, I understand that, you know, it's the traffic. Once, if that road was in, then there's really three ways, I think, for most of the neighbors. I think a lot of the concern is Pond's Edge. I think that might be more of the concern. I'm sure there's some out Pagels Place and on Ridge Road. From there, I think there's kind of eight home sites that really pick up the majority of that traffic, making the assumption that everyone is going to Ridge Road, turning right, and heading over to Main Street, so.
Okay, any other questions for Craig and his team? Okay, thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
I think we have all these wonderful people here, and someone would like to say something. So I'd like to make a motion to open the floor, please.
A second. There's a motion and a second to open the floor.
Time limit?
Yeah, I would like to try to limit the amount of time, because I think everybody's going to have the same concern. So I don't know if you've kind of worked together to say, okay, this is, but, you know, if we could keep it to a, a couple of minutes and, you know, because if everybody speaks, it's going to get to be a long, and everybody's going to be saying the same thing. So if we could keep it just to a couple of minutes a person, that would be great.
Okay, Joel?
And I'll just add to that, that this is a preliminary PUD. So you were notified of this, just because we knew that it was going to generate some interest, so you were notified. Typically, on a preliminary planned unit development, we wouldn't, under our code, notify residents. You would get notified at the final PUD, so there's actually a two-step approval process. As part of that final PUD, you will be notified again, and there will be a formal public hearing where everyone will be able to speak at that time. So even though the, the board may be looking to kind of limit discussion tonight, if this does progress to that final PUD process where it has another set of approvals, there will be a formal public hearing where everyone can speak on that matter.
You know, Joel, I, I appreciate your comment, and I think you're right there. It's just a preliminary at this time.
Absolutely.
They will be notified. You're going to get to calls, like we've all gotten calls from this already. And, you know, we're concerned about it. But I, I think at the time, when it comes down to the final, would be the time to open up the floor and let the people have their say.
Well, we have a motion and a second on the floor to open the floor with a limit of a couple of minutes. Now, I feel a little different about that, Gary, because if, you know, we have the developer here, and if he can take back some items of, and concerns, I think that that would be good for him and his team to be able to change anything that might be concerning to the residents out there, so.
I'm sure the developer will be present at every meeting we have till it is, if it is approved. They're not going to go away till-
I would agree, but once it goes for the final, he's not going to have time to change with, with the, with the changes that the people have. Because he already changed it from what he heard at Plan Board, so.
There's still going to be an open session before the final vote anyway.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Gary, but in respect of them showing up tonight, but I, I think, I think it's fair to open the floor to them and let them just speak.
I, I think this is how local government's supposed to work. They all came. I'd like to hear what they have to say.
Absolutely.
So we have a motion and a second to open the floor with limited, I mean, limited time on the comments. Couple of minutes each is what Jay said.
Right, please.
So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No.
We have one no. Okay. So as you come up one by one, please state your name and address for the record, so that our clerk has a. If you'd like to come up and-
My name is Nancy Keenan. I'm at three-six-four-seven Woods Edge Way.
Would you pull your mic up, please?
How's that? My name is Nancy Keenan, and I live at three-six-four-seven Woods Edge Way. I just had a list of five questions that I don't expect necessarily to be answered tonight, but I wanted to just put it out there with some of the things that weren't clear to some of us, and it's on-traffic related. Currently, the property, as I understand it, is zoned R1 and agricultural, and I didn't know what the process is for rezoning or how that transcends, transcends into the project as a whole. And I was questioning, when will an impervious surface study be done, or should it be requested? Note that the agricultural area now, and some of that area down where the stormwater pond is indicated, after a heavy rain, might stay with water twenty-four hours, up to a couple of days. And looking at an impervious surface study would help, looking with the formula that's in place for that, at looking at how it is affected by the sidewalks, the streets, and everything else, if that's going to be enough with the one pond that's on the site now. And I'm just pointing these things out just for the sake of the developer looking at everything. The stormwater pond with the environmentally sensitive area is adjacent to Ashwabandon Creek, which probably should have the NEW water involved, as they are responsible for the metro sewer district and the wastewater is at the base of the Fox River. Ashwabandon Creek is one of the areas that they are working on and are responsible for. Working with them and their needs in advance might help not delay the project, as they wish to not delay. As a village, I'm not sure if the village is paying into the sewer district project or who is responsible for the correct piping systems to be put into place and connected correctly. My final comment at this time is, who's responsible for grading issues in this project? Whatever was allowed at Woods Edge, the complex there resulted in a number of modifications after the fact, and it's now costly to the homeowners living there, having to make adjustments because the grading was not completed or, I don't know, approved or checked during the project itself. So that's what I'm submitting now, and I had made copies for everybody here, and I'll give it to the clerk, and I'll give one to Aaron as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good comments.
Mary, if we can, we can address some of those questions now, just to kind of walk through that in case people have some similar questions or comments in regards to those issues. I think Aaron will touch on the zoning end of things. I'll, I'll touch briefly because I think several of the questions that were raised were related to stormwater, surface water, and water, water quality issues. And Robert E. Lee can certainly, the representatives from Robert E. Lee can talk, talk more detail, and our village engineer, Steve Burr, is here as well. But in general, when developments like this come forward, it doesn't matter whether it's this one or any other development, and in what we would consider a greenfield project, any of the surface water that is being discharged into the watershed has to be maintained at the same peak flow that was existing prior to the development. So when you see those stormwater ponds being proposed in that development, that's intended to maintain that, that same peak demand into, like, Ashwabamay Creek and those surrounding watersheds. In addition to that, they have requirements to maintain water quality as well. So those concerns that were brought up with new water and Ashwabamay Creek and, and the mouth of the bay, there are certain water quality components to all that surface water runoff that is a result of that development. So things like total suspended solids or TSS, that gets you that cloudy, kind of brownish water at the mouth of the bay, they have to maintain water quality discharges so that it doesn't increase the TSS. In addition to that, we have total phosphorus loads and things of that nature that help reduce that. So that stormwater pond is designed based on the amount of impervious surface that is created as a result of the development to maintain peak flow into the tributaries, to reduce any TSS- to reduce any TSS or suspended solids, and also to improve the phosphorus discharges into that. So I think as the PUD comes through fruition, there will be much more detailed engineer designs to confirm that, and that's required under both village code as well as statutory law. So the developer is well aware of that. Those are all elements that are going to be considered. There was some questions maybe on grading issues. From a rough grading standpoint, the village engineer and the engineering staff will make sure that certain grades are being met based on the grading plan that's established as part of the, the final PUD. So those will be checked as construction is occurring. Oftentimes, what you'll see is grading issues develop either post-construction, meaning that the subdivision or the development is put in, and everything matches rough grade to the development plan, but then you may have individual homes being constructed, and then individual homeowners doing things to the final grade of their lot, and that's where you have some of those issues. So we do the best that we can through the building construction process of a new home to get the grades to match the grading plan, but oftentimes, it happens post-construction, and then we, and then when one person grades their lot a certain way, their neighbor has issues downstream, and then they grade their lot, and it just kind of passes that, that challenge. And I, I chuckle, because Tracy and I know that from our prior experience down in the valley, where that is a routine problem. But that touches on, I think, the stormwater and the grading questions that were brought up, and I think Aaron can probably answer the zoning question best.
Sure. In terms of the, the zoning, the planned unit development or preliminary PUD and final PUD actually is the rezoning process. This, the planned unit development actually is a more extensive and lengthy rezoning process, because you're looking at the properties as a whole, as opposed to individual parcels. So that's why you don't see a rezoning from R1 to R2, or R2 to R3. The planned unit development is an overlay that goes across the entire development, and this process by which we're taking this through the planned unit development is the actual rezoning process. So at the end of this, should the village board approve a final PUD, that PUD will address the zoning for this, to allow for this development to happen.
Okay. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ryan Valenfeldt. I live at 3535 Arts Lane. So we were the ones that were kind of asking about the berm, but the thing is, the back half of that proposed building of condos and everything, our house is situated different than the houses around us. So our house is built up on the hill, and it overlooks the farm field. So there's a good amount of slope going down to the farm field. So when we're in our pool, we don't want to be looking at condos, or we don't want to be looking at two-story condos, we don't want to be looking at apartment buildings. I know they proposed a berm, but it's going to have to be a pretty big berm for us to keep our privacy. I mean, we moved up here from Appleton, we have a daughter, we don't want our house value to go down, and we want to keep the privacy. With this, it's, we're going to have lights everywhere, shining into our living room, in our kitchen, our pool isn't going to be private anymore. So, I mean, our situation is different with all the neighbors on Arts Lane, because we're built up on the hill, and it slopes down to the farmland. So we see the whole entire farm field from our pool, even our kitchen, our living room. So, I mean, all those lights are going to come into our house. So like I said, you know, it's going to have to be a pretty big berm with trees. And, you know, in order to get an idea of what it looks like, you almost have to visit the area, because the way our house is plateaued, and then it slopes down. And I, you know, you guys are trying to flex it for multifamily units, when it's proposed for single families. If it was single family instead of the two-story condos, we would be fine with a berm. But like I said, those lights are going to just shine right into our house, and, I mean, pretty much our privacy's gone. And I'm sure our value of our house will, will go down.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi. My name is Laurie Parvier, and I live at 3710 Woods Edge Way. As a current president of the Woods Edge Association, I respectfully submit a petition expressing our concerns regarding the proposed preliminary planned unit development. Our association is comprised of 65 single-family homes, and 72 residents have signed the petition expressing their opposition to this proposed development. The content, content of the petition expresses the following concerns. We're concerned that the rezoning this parcel from single-family homes to multifamily dwellings will result in a population density undesirable to this area, potentially leading to devaluation. Another concern is the increased traffic in and out of Woods Edge, which bring, coming through Woods Edge from this development, they would be probably going out to Grant Street, which in the morning, Morning Dove Lane, which intersects with, intersects with Grant Street, is impossible already. People bringing their kids to school, going to work, also the intersection of Maynav and South Ridge, as well as Maynav and Spirit Way. We hope that the members of the village board are thoughtful and thorough, as they weigh the factors that could bring negative consequences as a result of rezoning this parcel. I also have a letter from Mike and Amy Harold, residents of Woods Edge, that they asked me to submit to all of you, as they could not be here tonight. And I have a copy of the petition for everyone as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else would like to come up and make any comments?
Terry McGregor, 3641 Woods Edge Way. It's kind of interesting, because the, my, coming here tonight, my shoe, I guess, how's that saying, go where your, your shoe's on the other foot? Five years ago, I came here when it was under consideration of changing the zoning by Highland Ridge. There was, there's a church there, and they were looking at putting some condos in there. It was a very small, maybe 30-unit condo complex over there. And all the people got together, and that lived around there, and it was not passed. And I understand that Ashwabanon really needs to have a development for the aging, because all the boom, baby boomers and everybody's moving up, and there needs to be more 55-plus homes for people. So I was, I came to that meeting wanting to have a condo built for me. I was in a bad motorcycle accident. I needed zero entryway up into my home and everything. And because that was denied, I was forced. I wanted to stay in the Ashwabanon area. I was forced to look elsewhere. And what I found was Woods, was Woods Edge Complex, and that's why I moved there. Now, I knew that there was agriculture land that may go for sale at some point in time. Everybody does. But it wasn't for sale at the time, and if, and it was zoned for R1. So I thought, if there's going to be some homes built right behind me, I am right on the corner of Woods Edge Way and Pond, Pond's Edge Court, however that's said. Pond's Edge Court, right. I'm right on the corner of that. That traffic already, for me getting in and out of my driveway, from just a little bit of people that we have right there, is difficult. And they're going to need to put stop signs in or something there at that corner. That is going to also then increase the noise. People are just, you know, going, going to regular, you know, speed and making the corners. Now they're going to need to be stopping and accelerating again. So that's going to add a lot of more noise, like they said, all the lights coming in from Arts Street that comes down. All of those lights shine directly into my home now. I can't imagine of the lights that are going to be shining into my home from that street going through, and having it be that the, no determination of when that street is going to go through to Main Street, for all of the apartments and townhomes and everything, requiring all those people to be coming out those two, only those two areas, is just going to be a lot of congestion and a lot of noise, and, you know, that's not what we moved there for, and that's not what we purchased our land for. So I hope that is really considered before you make the decision to rezone it, or whoever makes the decision to rezone it is, you know, when we bought all of our property there, it was for the R1 zoning that was going to be. I have no problem if it's going to be regular homes back there, but when you start getting into the multi, you know, the two-story townhomes and the apartment buildings, is when the big concern comes in to play. So I hope that's, I hope this is denied.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else like to make any comments?
Captain Huxma, 1024 Astro Court. So when you're looking at the plan, and you're talking about Woods Edge, now that's kind of a HOA, right, condo community? Is that right?
Correct.
So all these lots are the exact same size, or keep comparing it to the size of those lots, but at 1024, we are individual homeowners here, and our lots are like twice the size of that. So for every, every lot on our street, there's going to be two homes, two ours. So that's kind of a concern of mine. So you, you say the traffic as well is not going to be an issue, but when you're looking at it and you're counting the amount of homes there, it's going to be double to triple the amount of traffic that we currently have now. People already speed down Ridge Road. We don't have sidewalks on Ridge. I have three young girls. We ride our bikes on the road. It's already kind of dangerous doing that, and so increasing that amount of traffic really, really concerns me. So why can't the road to Main be continued through Arts Lane? Is that, is that a possibility?
I don't know.
And then I think we're all under the Spring Meadows restrictive covenants. Is that correct? Is that going to be continued through that neighborhood as well?
I don't know. Are they on Spring Meadows?
So restrictive covenants are a role of the developer. The village does not have any role in restrictive covenants when it comes to subdivisions.
Aaron, can you address Arts Lane and why it can't be a full road because of the gas easement?
So a couple of things with Arts Lane. There is a small, I want to say it's probably 50-foot wide, maybe 20-foot wide, right-of-way that does extend from the end of the bulb of Arts Lane. But certainly, the parcels that are there extend up to that, and the right-of-way that's there is not enough to put a street through there. So basically, it's all, it's private property, is what it comes down to. There's also the gas line easement that goes through there. It's 100-foot wide gas line easement for TC Energy, for the main gas line that goes through that area.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else?
Jake Vanderlot, I live on 3505 Arts Lane. So you're proposing to have a walking trail down Arts Lane to butt into the walking trail that you're putting on Main Street? Eventually?
So the proposal does include an extension of the Sand Acres Trail, connecting to the bulb and that little right-of-way that extends off the bulb of Arts Lane, correct?
It's coming off of Ash, Astro Court?
Not Astro Court. It comes through the proposed development.
Okay. So like you said, the road's only 20 feet wide?
The right-of-way that's, that extends past the street, past the existing parcels, correct?
Okay. So you're going to have a walking trail where you can't even take two vehicles down
Most of our existing trails, I believe, are 10-foot wide.
Okay. So you're going to blacktop?
That would be the developer at this point. It's not a village trail. I'm just using our, our trails as examples for width purposes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have one more comment. As the gentleman proposed about going through Arts Lane, I can tell you right now, we will not sell any of the property for any road to go through there. So any idea of trying to get us to sell it is a no-go. So whatever you have to do then, is not going to go through our property.
Okay.
So, I mean, this is, these people that are planning on building this, they know that this is zoned for single family, and now you're trying to flex it just because the village needs more money. So all the other people have to suffer, especially us. Like I said, if you guys came out to see how our property sits, you would see in our shoes how the lights would come in. And like I said, with him proposing a road going through Arts Lane, I can tell you right now, you guys won't have enough land, because we will not sell anything to the village. That's all.
Thank you.
I'm Sharon LaRue. I live at 3661 Woods Edge Way. My husband and I purchased a property four and a half years ago. We directly bought up to the farm field. Totally understood, development happens, it's going to happen, and we're not against it by any means. We concur with everyone here. We, we prefer single family. My only consider, my only request, I guess, to the developer is, he was kind enough to change his plan, to decrease the density, put in those duplexes, and take out some of the townhomes. We'd like to see more of that taken away. He's also kind enough to put in a berm behind, or adjacent to the Arts Lane people. We would request the same for Pagel's Place and Astro Court, Woods Edge Way. We are, the way it looks on the map to me, we have, we don't have very deep lots. They are zero lot line. They're going to be coming way back against that property line. They're going to be virtually on some of the property lines. I have a little bit more protection where I am, but some of the people, I mean, they are right on the edge of their property. I understand the developer needs to make money, but I hate to have it at our expense. We're senior citizens. We have a wonderful HOA where we are. We have very strict covenants. We, we abide by the rules. We try really hard to. We don't want to see something infringing that close with no rules, no whatever. And I, I would think, and I would hope, Mr. Casner, that you would at least put a foliage line, or, or something to give us a little bit of, you know, feeling like we still live in a home, you know? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would anybody else like, yep, sir?
Joe Augustine, 1051 Misty Metal Circle. Been there for 16 years now, and watched the whole area get developed and traffic pick up. And I think as a bare minimum, Pagel's Way should be designated with both right-hand and left-hand turn lanes coming out of there. Because you've got such a short road, any traffic that backs up is automatically going to end up coming back down through Pagel's Place or to, uh, I'm sorry, to Woods Edge. And that's either going through Woods Edge or if they turn right, they're gonna be going up through Misty Metal Circle. We've got a private road up there. That road is not designed to the same width as a standard city street. It's also a private road, which means we're responsible 100% for the upkeep and maintenance. And I'm not just concerned about the vehicular traffic after everything gets built out, but during construction too, so if anything is going to be done in the way of tackling this development, I think Pagel's Place needs to be at least two lanes coming out, both right and left-hand turn lane designated. Anything to encourage drivers to go that way because the assumption is everybody's gonna go north up to Main Street. Anybody going to Menards or Walmart or something is gonna turn left. And, I mean, they're gonna be coming down past the park, which again, like somebody mentioned, has an awful lot of child traffic with people on bikes and everything else. So the last thing you wanna do is have people get discouraged because they had to wait for a while at a stop sign or something and then decide they're gonna speed their way through the neighborhood to get out of there.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to talk?
Hi, I'm Anna Snyder and I live at 1016 Astro Court. And I don't wanna go over what other people have said, but I wanted to let the village know that the people who live on Astro Court, we have the same concerns. If you look in our backyards, we understood at some point that that field would be developed. We just hope that we wouldn't have two backyard neighbors. My sister-in-law gets four backyard neighbors. Um, you know, we've lived there for 12 years, we've seen the development come through. We have dogs, we walk every day. And the traffic has certainly increased and with the increased traffic has, people like to speed through there, people use Ridge as a cut-through to get over to Greyhound. And it's, it's just gotten worse and worse and, um, dangerous. So the traffic is my main concern. I would love to see a traffic impact analysis done for the area. And, um, and then I'd love to see the developer reconsider the smaller lots that are behind our houses.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else would like to make any comments? Voice your concerns, questions?
Move to close the floor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to close the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, the, the floor is closed. Thank you all for coming out. Um, like, like Kelly said, you know, this truly is, uh, local government at its finest. And when we're able to hear from all of you that, what your concerns are. And it's great to have Craig and his team in the audience so that they can hear them and, and, uh, we can see where we go from here. So, thank you all very much. Yeah, I know, we do, yeah. So we, we need a motion to approve or deny the preliminary PUD.
I'll move to approve the, uh, proposed, uh, preliminary, uh, plat mat.
With staff?
With staff conditions.
All second.
Hey, there's a motion and a second to approve the preliminary PUD with staff conditions. Any comments, questions, concerns?
Can I ask a question for, um, Erin? So this is preliminary approval, obviously has to go through the process and a final approval. Or the preliminary approval that we're making tonight, can anything be changed on this then?
Yes. It's not like a preliminary subdivision plat, which is different. That is certain statutory regulations attached to it. This is a preliminary PUD. Uh, so you certainly can make changes at the final PUD standpoint.
So can you make a change that multifamily can't be there? Like extreme changes like that or is it more smaller ones?
I mean, what you're doing here is you're, you're proving the concept, saying, yep, this as a concept is what we wanna move forward with. Again, it's, are there any major red flags out there? Um, but basically you're looking at this preliminary PUD concept and you're saying, yep, this is the concept we wanna go with. Now certainly you can make changes, tweaks, you know, nothing is final until the final PUD is approved.
I mean, I just have the concern of Spirit Way not being extended. And I realize that's another property. So that's my big concern with traffic and trying to get them out to more of a main line. So that's my concern with this development and the general placement of things, so.
Yeah, um, that's why I wanted everybody to, to talk tonight is so that we could hear all of the concerns. So that Craig could take them with his team and, and, uh, figure out how we could solve some of those issues. Housing, every, every time I go to an event for, for local government, it's all about housing, housing, housing. There is a lack of housing, a huge lack of housing. And, um, everybody is trying to find new ways and that's, the lot sizes have to be smaller. You can't build a house nowadays for $250 a square. You, you can't do it. So if you're building a thousand-square-foot house, your house is gonna be at least $250,000. And that doesn't include your lot, you know? And, you know, you add another $75,000 for a lot, that's $325,000 for a house the size of the ones that are just on the other side of Lombardi Avenue, you know, in Green Bay that are built in the 50s. So it, it's a problem everywhere and, and, um, you know, the developers do have to be able to also make some money or they wouldn't develop. So, anyway, um, that being said, so we have a motion and a second to approve with staff conditions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Just one, no. Okay. 10B, consider discuss act on a producer full-service retail sales application from Timekeeper Distillery. Patrick?
So as the board recalls, in August, the Timekeeper Distillery submitted an application to basically have a secondary location across the street of Holmgren Way. Um, the board had some kind of concerns with the legalities of the Timekeeper Distillery going in. It's gonna be kind of a sharing this open marketplace-type concept with the Superday business that's also located in that property. Staff has done some pretty extensive, uh, research, uh, meetings, discussions regarding, uh, the legalities about being there. I can confirm to the board that Timekeeper can be in that area. Uh, how this process typically works with this new AB 105 form with the secondary location for distilleries, breweries, wineries. They have kind of a permanent, I call it, kinda call it a permanent location. They can have other locations elsewhere in the state. They submit an application, which is before you today. And then if it's approved, that application gets sent on to the DOR. So the DOR can still, um, still reviews it if it's approved by the municipality. So if the village board denies the application, the DOR, DOR won't even touch this application. To lack of a better term and just kinda simplifying things. So it needs to be approved here first before the DOR takes a look at it. Um, now with that said, uh, the, the Timekeeper Distillery, uh, can like lawfully go into this space, even though it's sharing this open kind of concept, uh, market-type area with the Superday business restaurant in there. The only thing that Timekeeper can't do, and we've expressed this and they're very well understood in Superday as well, is that you can't have kind of a crossover where, crossover where maybe business operations would go. So think of like in the kitchen, the alcohol can't be, I guess, stored, uh, made, served, obviously in the kitchen, as well as like the Superday area. So think of like Superday, like the restaurant, the, um, like the counter, can't be serving alcohol at the Superday counter. So it's, it's pretty well understood that the alcohol, like where you make it, where you sell it, produce it right there, has to be separate from the Superday business area. Now with that said, the patrons who are visiting Superday and the Timekeeper, they can overlap, that's fine. So you can sit in the common area, uh, and have, um, alcohol. And then sure, you could also have food from the restaurant as well. Uh, and there's nothing in the law prohibiting that from being there. So additionally to that, I know there's some concerns that if Superday were to leave, right? So what happens with another business that goes in? Nothing would prevent Timekeeper from operating there as well. So the business is kind of irrelevant, right? So there are other, specifically when you're talking about the type of business, so are there other concerns, like maybe the health department would go in, would, would talk about? So, yeah, you, you think of the examples all day with what kind of business that would go in. That's more of a health department-related as far as the board's concerned. Um, any business really can be in that area where Superday currently is located and Timekeeper can still, can still be there. Um, so that's kind of the legality behind this. Um, now with that said, it's still within the board's discretion, right? So, um, although they lawfully can be there, the board does have discretion to approve, deny, um, going forward. There aren't really any staff concerns from at least my perspective of where this is going, where the proposal is for the outlines of, of the, um, of the premises. There aren't any other concerns from my perspective of the patrons overlapping, at least from my perspective. Uh, the other thing I wanted to, uh, update the board on is that there's an amended application. Uh, there was an amended application for this location. And it involved, uh, kind of a reduction on the parking lot area. So I think NFL draft, Packer games, Timekeeper does wanna sell outside at, uh, during the Packer games, the NFL draft, et cetera, and maybe other special events. It did kind of, uh, condense the parking lot area to really just kind of be right in front of their business. Uh, so kind of think of other, other businesses that the board has approved for extending their license premise, same concept, have to kind of barrier off where this parking lot area would be. Uh, and that would be, that's just what they're proposing. Um, they did confirm that they will only be open when the Superday is closed, uh, but for these special events, so draft, Packer game, et cetera. Other than that, uh, I just wanted to mention that if there's any other questions or concerns on the amended application, that I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I know the applicants are here as well.
I'll move to approve the full-service retail application from Timekeeper Distillery.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second, but we need, uh, some discussion on this because I have a few questions for you, Patrick. So this, this is basically, um, I, I think it's a great concept. I like the concept, I really do. Um, but I, I have to clarify a few things. This is basically, they don't have to have food, so it is basically a bar. In, in essence, am I correct?
Yeah, in the sense of, um, I, I know they do have, uh, some food that's being offered. I don't know the specifics of that. I know Dan can, could probably speak on that if, if need, if there's questions on that. But they do offer that, correct. This would essentially merit answering your question. Yeah, it is, uh, would be approving just the distillery portion. So there is no requirement for them to have a restaurant food type thing.
Correct. Okay, so here's my next question. How many of these can be in our municipality?
It really depends on the applicant. Um, so there, the amount of secondary locations that they can have, um, outside of their primary hub, so to speak.
Not this one specific?
Correct.
I'm talking, um, oh gosh, what's another distillery? I don't, let's say Badger State Brewery.
Sure, sure. Think of any brewery, winery, distillery in the state.
Badger State Brewery wants to come and be within the Ashwabnan borders.
I don't know if there's a limit by the state.
There, okay, so can, would it be, would the village have the ability to say, yes, we like this concept, yes, we're gonna do this? But then all of a sudden, we have three or four, yep. I guess where I'm going with this is our location of our municipality is, um, pretty unique. Um, I don't want all of a sudden all these little, and I, I don't mean to call it a bar because that's not really what I mean, but I don't want all these little, um, distilleries popping up all over in Ashwabnan. That is my concern.
There's, um,
So do we have the ability to deny it just because we think one is enough and we don't want anymore?
Well, my thought would be Mary on that is we, we gotta approve these individually. So to be honest, we can set our own limit.
Well,
Get it, we set a precedent that, you know, but there's no reason we can't set our own limit as to how many, um, Class B beer licenses we give out.
Correct, but what, that's what I'm saying is do we have the ability to deny any amount that we want? If we want this to be here, yes, we can approve this one. And the next one, we can just say, no, we don't want anymore.
Provided that the board makes some kind of a rational basis decision based on the next application that comes in, right? So you're next to this one, this one, this one, we don't like, necessarily like this area. You're too close to a school, for example. Um, yeah, yeah, you can. I don't necessarily think that there's a precedent setting where if we prove one, we approve them all, right? Each individual business is separate. Why, um, maybe this one's appropriate for this location because there's a restaurant there already, they already have food sales. The DOR agent that I spoke to, um, indicates that this is a good business, right? There's no concern from the DOR for this business. Now with that said, if the board has concerns with another applicant that comes in, uh, now there's a distillery next to a brewery, next to a winery, and this business may, might, might not be as quite as the up and up on this one or the hours are different, as long as there's some kind of rational basis for that denial, based on that, this is too much, uh, too compact of an area where we're having just so much like an alcohol, kinda strip location where there's all these look, all these here? Yeah, yeah, definitely.
I'm just thinking, our public safety department, if we have five, six, seven of these popping up all over, you know, it's gonna put a great strain on you. So, anyway.
You know, I do not have anything against Timekeepers, trust me. People do a great job. You do a great job in marketing your property. I know where you are in Waso and I know you wanna come this way. I'm not talking against you, I'm talking for the village. We get one, there's more gonna have, there's more gonna come. And where are we gonna set the limits? That's why I'm totally against it. Why open a can of worms when we can shut it right now?
Did, did, um, did you have a chance to talk to the one that's going up in Deep Pier? And find out how they're doing it?
No, I didn't, I didn't.
My understanding, it's a very similar setup to what's being requested. I think that one, though, is not a distillery but a winery, if I'm correct. So it's a, it's a similar concept, they have to go through the same approval process. But instead of it being a distillery, it's a winery. But that, the, within the changes in the statute, those are all relatively the same. A brewery, a winery, a distillery, basically a producer, if you will, of an alcoholic beverage that's permitted through the state can have these secondary retail locations. And so it's a very similar process. So, um, so very similar in nature, not a, not a discernible difference between what they're proposing to do here at, at the Revolution Market with, with Superday. With that,
I think there's one out in Howard too, that's coming.
Maybe. Um, there, there are similar situations, so in, in Swamaco, for example, there's an Anapi Brewery and then immediately adjacent to it, there's, uh, 888 Cheese Company, it's called. So it's kind of a restaurant, now they are in separate buildings. Um, so they have similar arrangements where you can order food from the 888 Cheese Company. They'll bring it over while you're in Anapi. And then there's an out, kind of a shared outdoor seating area. So these concepts that, uh, you're seeing are, are, are probably gonna become more prevalent and, and less prevalent over time, just because you have individuals that specialize in producing a particular type of alcoholic beverage, whether it be a beer, wine, or a distilled, um, hard alcohol. And then these individual chefs that are running these specialized kind of kitchens, if you will, of these special food, food options. Um, now this particular issue is a singular matter with Timekeeper Distillery that is before you. Should the board decide that it wants to establish some specific regulations as it relates to these permitted-type producers, breweries, wineries, distilleries, uh, it would be my understanding that we could establish that, more or less kind of creating your own quota, similar to what you do with Class A licenses. Um, and then you would basically manage and regulate it in the same fashion. That decision would come at a different meeting, under a different conversation. That's not pertinent to, to the Timekeeper Distillery discussion. But that could be an option that the board would like staff to entertain is what, what does that look like as far as establishing some type of quota that would then be used to help form that rational basis for denial?
Okay, thank you.
I, um, this is a little bit of a forward-thinking proposition here. But if you go to the bigger, uh, cities, metropolitan areas, it's, it's, it's very, it's very common as, as we're starting to build up over here and in different areas, but especially around here and the type of person you're, 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 you're getting into the area, the young professionals, things like that. You go to the, you know, the San Antonios, the Austins, the, and I, cause I'm always down in Texas, so I think of those two. It's an exciting concept, the, the people love it. I mean, they're, they're, they're able to just wa- I mean, they're, they're, they're able to just walk down, walk into a market, grab something to eat. We haven't talked about their food yet. I've talked to these people before, and, and if they want to, we want to let them come up and speak. They can spit, if there's any concern about not having enough of a profile of food, I think you'd be surprised at what, what they do or they're willing to do. But I think this is a little bit of a progressive idea here for our community. Gary, I gotta disagree with you, that why open a can of worms? If we're gonna have that attitude, we're gonna shut down a lot of business going forward and shrivel up and die. This, and, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna try something, I think is an exciting adventure that I think our citizens in the area would like to see. I think this is, this group of people right here is the group to do it with. They've got people down at the state that know them, that hold them in high regard, high regard. They've got people in, in Wausau, that many businesses and community leaders that know these people. You've seen their presentation, they have their act together. And if somebody was gonna come here and we were gonna decide, we were gonna go through a project like this, this is the, the group I would want to go forward with.
I, I, I agree with everything you've said, Chris. I, I don't disagree with any of it. My only concern with being able to limit, I'm gonna say limit, in a legal way, the number that we can have, we are, we are next to an NFL stadium. We are in Wisconsin. Wisconsin is known for having drinking problems. And that, that is what I'm looking about. We've got the draft coming. You know, you're gonna have a lot of people that are gonna be wanting to do these types of things down here. And, and that is what I say, that's gonna strain, the chief is over there shaking his head. That is gonna put a huge strain. I said this before, he laughed at me yesterday in staff. Detroit had eleven hundred cops for the draft. I have fifty-four. And he, this gentleman said to me, oh, you have fifty-four hundred? I said, no, I have one thousand and forty-six less than eleven hundred. So that, you, you just always have to think of all those things. I think this is a fabulous thing, I really do.
Well, I think Patrick addressed the, the, the part about opening up everybody else. You know, we can, as a, as a, as a group, as a board, take these, everyone on, on their merit.
Okay.
Having a limit on it is not a.
I, I, I want to jump back in on this. I am for the progress of this village. You know it as well as I do. I'll go along with you on one thought. We have the option of how many we want. That started out at the other end there. I would agree to this as opening up this on a temporary, one-person try. Let them do it for, and see where it goes from there. I would go, you know, and I.
That would be a different conversation as far as putting.
But, but we've opened it up to, can we have a number?
Yeah.
But that's a different.
And I'm saying, I want a number now. And I'm wanting to, I'm willing to let them try it.
What we can do, Gary, is based on what we're hearing from the board, is that staff can be directed to kind of look at, review, determine if we can put a quote on it in, in-house, and what that appropriate number would be. Again, we'll, we'll take that back, his guidance from the board tonight, outside of the application, right? But, yeah, as, as of right now, I don't think there's anything in the statute prohibiting that. That's just a very new law. So whether the, the board can, there, there are some administrative ordinances and, and procedures you can adopt or create. It's kind of similar to what we have for our Class B licenses. But as of right now, we, we can't put a condition on the Timekeeper Distillery for their application based on what we might do in the future relating to like a quota. So again, to boil it down, we can't put a temporary, a conditional approval on them.
Right.
Brian, Chief Brian, can you comment on the space that they have reserved for outdoor? If you have any concerns with that?
I don't know that I necessarily have any concerns with the space itself. It's just the added responsibility for us to make sure that they're in compliance, there are not any issues. So I, I don't want to belabor that point. The space itself, no. The additional workload that it's gonna have for us, of course, that's gonna be a concern, especially when they're only gonna be open during Packer games and the NFL draft.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, whoop, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Patrick, just on page three, this last section, part G, has to get answered.
On the application, Chris?
Yeah, so that it can be submitted, so we make sure that we have our answers.
I'm losing you. Relocate. Thank you.
We'll have to do that. I did the last one, I just want to make sure that we have it.
So what, what, what Chris is referring to is that on the AB 105 form itself, there's a couple of questions that the DOR has that would like to be answered. When reviewing, if this application is approved. So number one is, will the municipality limit the scope of alcohol beverage, beverages offered for sale? I, I guess kind of speaking not for, for them, but what we heard from the last meeting is that they're only gonna be selling kind of what they had in Wausau, not gonna be pouring shots and that kind of thing. I think this is, that's what this question's referring to. Number two is, will the municipality impose any requirements or restrictions for the full-service retail outlet? And then number three is, describe the municipal restrictions indicated in questions one or, one or two. So basically, is there any limit of the scope of beverages they can sell? And will the municipality impose any requirements or restrictions for, for the full-service retail outlet?
So in other words, that would be, are they only allowed to do the alcohol part and not beer?
Correct, yes, yes. Basically what they're selling, right? So as what we know right now, and if you guys want to hear from the applicant, sure. But I don't believe you guys sell wine or beer.
Could you?
Just come up, Dan.
Do you need name and address?
Yes, please.
Kim Weber, three eight two four North Fourteenth Street, Wausau, five four four oh three.
Dan Weber, three eight two four North Fourteenth Street, Wausau, Wisconsin.
And Julie Veronix, seventeen forty Ledgery Road into Pier.
So I'd like to thank you all again for your consideration, your time. We know these things are new. To answer this question specifically, because of when the law has changed back in May, that allowed for the AB 105, it also allowed us to be a full-service retail establishment, being able to serve wine, be able to serve beer. To the point that's brought up, you can't order shots from us on our menu. We don't carry Jim Beam, we don't carry Jack Daniels. Our spirit, spirit profile is pretty much limited to what we produce, in addition to one or two others that we don't. So if we want to make a mojito, I can't make a quality rum based on our environmental conditions. So we'll have one on staff. Being able to provide wine and beer is a great alternative to people that aren't interested in, you know, cocktails, hard alcohol. It allows people that travel in groups to be able to have more full-service options. So this was our first step, when this law took place back in May, was to add those, to have lower alcohol content items, as well as items that are, make it more approachable for a group of people or a husband and wife. Because a lot of times, you know, the husband would be like, oh, it'd be really nice to get, you know, a nice little pour of whiskey. Well, the wife doesn't drink spirits. And so her having the ability to have a glass of wine only adds to, you know, the success of our, of our opportunity. One other point that was brought up that we'd like to make sure that we emphasize is, our culinary program is very robust at our facility in Wausau. The opportunities with Super Day were just too good to, to look past. And to, to have somebody that has that culinary skillset, to has that following, for us to be able to collaborate and put our best foot forward each was an opportunity that we think that it's worth, you know, worth putting forward. In the event that she retires or Super Day, you know, moves, you know, we would be implementing a full food service program. We have that in our facility in Wausau because it's successful and because, you know, we're trying to create a full encompassing experience. You know, we close at ten o'clock, we don't sell shots. We offer like a, a array of food as well as specialties. So our, to reiterate, you know, lobster roll nights on Fridays. We do pop-up events where we can try and bring in, you know, local chefs or do culinary opportunities that don't exist in, in like, especially in a town like Wausau, it's pretty hard to get like Indian food. So we'll have a chef come in and do like a butter chicken evening. And so all of these things are kind of encompassing to why we're trying to give the guests and, you know, our community members the best experience possible. So we will, we would look to have beer, wine, but we would not be looking to bring on a plethora of additional spirits or, or anything like that.
Now, the outdoor area is only for Packer games and the draft. Okay.
And what size is that gonna be now?
So we were able to take the information from the staff and look at what has been approved in the past. So it is directly what's in front of our unit three, or one oh three. And then down to the end of the building, all of that is within line of sight. And it'll also create additional, probably twenty parking spots or so for, you know, in addition to where our lot is. So we're, no one's hiding around corners, everything's allotted in. We'll have, you know, security staff, you know, they had brought up that, you know, our reputation with the state is well-known. We have almost seven years of no infractions with the city, with the municipality, with the health department. And at the end of the day, it is Timekeeper that is responsible for, for any of these infractions. And as a manufacturer, like that is our livelihood. We will not be able to operate if we step out, if, if, if things aren't followed to the T like they're supposed to be here.
Okay, thank you.
Close the floor.
Second.
Motion and a second, I don't think we opened it.
Yeah. That's okay. I, I opened it as well, Chris, put it down that way.
Right, so there's no.
There is a motion on the floor, though, for approval.
Yeah, right. So because they're pertinent to the application, we didn't have to open the floor to, to hear from them. So there's no motion to open or close, but the motion right now, I believe, is a first and a second, I think, for, to approve.
With staff condition, no, there's no staff conditions. Motion and a second to approve. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
The only, the only comments is just still to reiterate that Section G, if there are any restrictions to be placed by the municipality, they should be identified in the motion. I suspect that if there aren't any, then the motion can stand as is, and then it would be marked as no restrictions on the application.
Okay, does everybody understand? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, thank you.
Holy crap.
So I, I would like that we should look at possibly imposing our own.
Yeah, I think it'd be great for staff.
I would agree with that, just so we don't end up.
Staff to look at it.
We're in such a unique position here, you know, that I think it behooves our community, you know, the, that we don't have just a gigantic.
Number of them.
Yes, yes. And especially with the draft coming.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
We won't let you down.
Okay, C, consider, discuss, act on an amendment to the Stormwater Utility Ordinance regarding the billing process. Mr. Burr.
Good evening. So the item before you tonight is basically a request by staff to clean up, or not clean up, but adjust the billing method for, for multi-tenant properties. Right now, it's just somewhat cumbersome to, to bill the individual tenants versus the property owners. So we go, you know, if you're trying to figure out, you know, which tenants are in these multi-tenant buildings, when they leave. It's been kind of a, an issue working with, you know, Green Bay, Wari, Tullia, and this. So we, we've made an adjustment, a proposed adjustment to the ordinance to bill directly to the property owner.
It just makes sense.
And I know that I, I just asked at the Public Works that I, I, we're gonna notify them because obviously, you know, the landlord's gotta up, up the rent to recover that money. But, yeah, I mean, I, I think this just makes sense. So I'll make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number zero nine one dash twenty-four.
Second.
So just, just clarify for the record, we get the, the motion actually, I think, is oh nine two twenty-four.
Yeah.
Sorry, Jay.
Sorry, I didn't took my oh nine.
Trying to borrow my glasses.
Reason why I say that is, we did have an oh nine one twenty-four, which staff did withdraw before the board, board meeting, so.
Oh, did we miss an, an item? Maybe that's what we're.
Says oh nine, yeah.
Did we miss C? That's oh nine one twenty-four.
So we, so we are, we are on C right now. It's just, C did not specify, the, the agenda title didn't specify the actual ordinance number. So the ordinance number is oh nine two twenty-four.
Oh.
We're on, we skipped C.
We skipped, I think we skipped C.
We skipped C completely, that's a medical treatment facility.
No, you didn't get the new.
Yeah, I'm not sure if you're using the legislate app or if you're using.
We're using our.
PDF copy.
We have to use a PDF copy.
Legislation app is down. Oh, it's down. So that's why, okay.
Makes sense.
The agenda was amended prior to the twenty-four hour notice to remove what was item C, which was the AODA clinic.
I was gonna say.
The balance of the agenda then moved up. So item ten C is the Stormwater Ordinance. I didn't realize that your iPad had an issue with, I legislate. So if you're using an email with a PDF copy, it may be the old prior amended version of it. So look at your agenda, basically, ten D and below is moved up in agenda.
So Patrick, tell me what my motion is, Patrick.
Withdrawal.
I was gonna say.
Withdraw all advice. So the motion would be motion to approve ordinance number oh nine two twenty-four.
Two twenty-four.
There you go.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve that ordinance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, thank you. Ten D, consider, discuss, act on amendments to the Village of Ashwabnan Municipal Code related to RV camping in the village. Joel.
Okay, yeah, so we are in ten D, which is on your pack of ten E. And it's a, a discussion-only topic of conversation. This item was requested by trustee Zerbal a few weeks back, a couple of months back, to have a conversation about RV camping in the village, more specifically as it relates to the NFL draft in 2025. So what I wanted to do is have this item on the agenda, address within our code what we currently allow or disallow for camping in the Village of Ashwabnan. And then ultimately, open it for your discussion and direction back to us. Ultimately, if a decision is made to make any alterations to code, those items would have to come back for a future meeting. In the event that no changes are being requested by the board, and there isn't a, isn't a desire to make changes, that gives us a solid enough direction then to continue to communicate our current RV or camping restrictions in the village. That is something that we are currently promoting, I shouldn't say promoting, but communicating in our disallowance to camping in the village. But should there be a confirmation from the board, we will take a much more active role in making sure that businesses and, and residents in the area know that that is not permitted within the village. With that being said, RV camping in particular, trailer camping, is disallowed in the village under Chapter Seven, and it's specifically related to parking of trailers and vehicles. So in your cover memo, it talks about a couple of different sections within Chapter Seven that deals with traffic and vehicles, more specifically parking. So trailer parking is prohibited on streets, alleys, roads, things of that nature. In addition to that, trailer parking is prohibited, especially RV parking, unless it's on your own property. So again, a lot of individuals are looking to rent space on their property, to have off-site RVers, if you will, come and park their RV camper. That is where it is more explicitly stated that that is disallowed, okay? So now, an individual could park their own camper in their driveway. However, they could not use it for dwelling purposes either. So many of you camp, you have your own fifth wheel or your own travel trailer. You can park that in your driveway in a, in accordance to code, but you couldn't use it for dwelling purposes outside of a, a little snippet in the section that if you're doing an active building project on your home, maybe your bathroom or kitchen is not accessible because of that construction project, you would have so many days to, to use that as a dwelling. But you'd have to have an active building permit on premise to, to validate that. In addition to that, there was some conversation, I think casually amongst board members with me regarding camping at Ashwaba May Park. So Ashwaba May Park is the only park in our current system that allows camping, and it's at a specific location for a specific group. So we have a Boy Scout campground that is on the south side of the park, and it's specifically permitted for that, and it's approved by the park board. Beyond that, the only other time that's. Beyond that, the only other time that somebody could use Ashwabhanay Park for camping is for guard purposes, meaning they're providing security to maybe an event that is occurring there. That gets pre-approved by the director of Parks, Rec and Forestry and potentially the park board. An example of that is oftentimes when Art Street is there, they have someone camping on site to provide overnight security to the artist's equipment and materials that are in the park site. So that is what is currently on the books and the, the tools that we would use to enforce RV camping in the village or disallowing that camping. In the event that there is a desire to make changes, allowing it, we would have to get creative in our code to kind of create these temporary allowances, if you will, to allow it. If there is a strong desire to make our code clearer or cleaner, we can certainly do that as well, where we really explicitly state that RV camping is, is certainly not allowed. But this is the section of code that we've been currently using to enforce. There are members from Public Safety here and talking with, with those prior to that, and they'll certainly speak to this item. They are strongly opposed to the RV camping. We had previously allowed it in the village, in particular on Packer game days in the former Kmart parking lot, and they expressed that they've had significant challenges when that was permitted in that, in that parking lot. So think about every front yard, basically having the ability to have one, two, three campers and some of the challenges that that could create with, you know, dwellings and things of that nature. So I'll certainly let Chief Yule speak to their concerns from a public safety standpoint. So with that, I'll turn it back over to the board for discussion and, and await for your direction.
Before we get going, and I'd like to hear the safety department give us their explanations on why they're against it.
Well, Gary, I know we spoke about this a little bit earlier in the week, but I can't express my concern enough with the challenges that this would face, that we would face as a public safety agency. A lot of the challenges that come with this is added issues that public safety could face. Domestic issues, alcohol issues, everything that comes along with camping and campgrounds that you've ever heard of would be a problem for us. On top of that, our resources are already going to be extremely, extremely stressed for the NFL and everything that's going on there.
Because how many cops do we have?
Yeah, well, I'm gonna have to correct you a little bit because after, in, in, after October fourth, we'll be down to forty nine.
Yes.
So we have significant hiring challenges. We have significant challenges keeping people. So the issues that we will face, you know, I, I, I can, I can tell you from a staffing standpoint, this is not something that we can endure as a, as a staff, the challenges that it's to bring on. So again, we're talking about potential domestic issues. We're talking about potential drug issues. We're talking about potential human trafficking issues, all of that stuff that comes along with people camping together. You know, disturbances, you know, I can't even express enough the challenges that this could face for us. As I said, and I'm already stressed staff.
The, the reason I, I, I discussed this and had Joel, I had to put on the agenda, totally sensitive to what you're saying, chief. Absolutely agree with you. I just didn't know. Was there some opportunities here we're not looking at? That's all I, to bring forward, you know.
And I agree with that. Yeah, there's always, there's always those unintended consequences when you, when you think about those things. And I just want to make sure that you guys are aware that I think that it's going to be a big challenge for us to be able to, to police our, our village during this time with all the people that are already going to be in town.
Yep. And no way do I want this or anybody here wants this to be the Wild West. That's for sure. I just didn't know, you know, I'm not the smartest guy up here. And, you know, somebody had, so we collectively had some ideas of giving our residents an opportunity, because they ask me, you know, what's allowed? I want to make a few bucks off of this, you know, it's a once in a lifetime opportunity. So, you know, is there an idea? Is there an opportunity out there? If there's not, there's not.
And I had some of the same questions, Chris. I had somebody approach me on it.
You know, I think we all had phone calls on what's going to happen. The first thing I thought of when the draft is coming from Green Bay is safety. That's number one. There's only two gates that get into Lambo Field from Green Bay. All the other gates have to come through Ashwabhanan to get into the field. You know, I'm a permanent camper and we got a guy down the other end there as a wheeler on camping. And we know what it's like. I remember the Kmart days. It was fun to drive through there at night to see how stupid people can get. So I agree with the safety department a hundred percent. We do not want to get into this. They think they're going to make a lot of money on this. A camper will take up two to three parking spots. They can make that up parking cars real quickly and have no problems, no dirt, dirty things on the, on their property. It'll be just a clean thing. Park cars, get them off. Tomorrow, fill it up again.
Out of curiosity, how did Kmart, how was Kmart allowed to do that for so many years? Did they have a special permit? Because if our ordinances are like this, how did that occur?
I want to know how they were parked at the Bohemian last week.
Yeah. He was, he was testing it for the draft, is what I was told.
Yeah, that, that was addressed. So they, they were, we were told they were testing.
They, they did it illegally, Gary.
No kidding.
Imagine that. You know, and like Gary mentioned.
If you want to see campgrounds, go behind QuickTrip in Green Bay where the, Green Bay has all that empty property behind QuickTrip there. I mean, and then across, I mean, it, it's a sight to see. And then go there Monday morning and see what's left.
The one question I have is Joel, and this probably goes back to staff. I would really like to know, just as an information, what the challenge is these guys are going to have if Green Bay says they can do it right over there on the other side of, of the corner. Is Green Bay going to allow this? You know how that is. I, I don't want it, but it's going to make these guys' job tougher.
You don't go into Green Bay.
Jay, they're doing it now.
Yeah.
Like I said, go behind Kmart, go behind all the property that's vacant off of Bart Starr in Cannadale.
Yep.
They, they come in, it's, it's a camper owns.
Yeah.
Just take a ride by there on some game day.
Yeah. Haven't seen that. But yeah, I, having been, you know, an RVer and I am still an RVer, I can in my mind come up with a whole list of other things on, on top of the list that you have as far as, which would be all public works type of issues. What do you do with all the garbage? You have waste, you know, you have, nobody's going to have a dump. So is somebody all of a sudden going to go, oh, guess what? We're just gonna put this down in the sewer.
It's going to be like Christmas vacation.
Exactly. That's exactly what I was thinking of.
There you go.
So that's why I just, boy, I couldn't, and one person that came to me, I said, you know, it's going to be tough because we aren't set up for any RVing and that. Interestingly enough, on the news tonight, Brown County announced that all their parks are now open and it's a hundred bucks a night, three night minimum for, for parking, but it's in their camping spots, you know, so.
Brown County advertised that a long time ago. They were going to be open. You know, I, I, I'm quite, quite familiar with Door County, and I talked to some of the people up there. That's too early for them to open up, but they're giving a thought to open up early. They may not have water, but you're going to have electricity and dumping is available there if you need it. Because I've seen people just pull the plug and let the gray water or the black water run. It's.
So I think we're all of the same idea that we don't want to open up camping in the village.
I will say this, the county is limited to a hundred dollar, or a hundred dollars a night. And that's, and they would have went to a lot more than that, but the state doesn't allow them to, to make money. They can only cover their expenses.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Otherwise, it was discussed.
Oh, I imagine.
They, it could have been a moneymaker for the county, but state puts the kibosh on that.
Yeah.
Okay. You got your orders on that one. Nobody wants that. Okay, moving on to ten E. Consider Discuss Act on Action on Right-of-Way Agreement for Cornerstone Fourth Sheet at the Ashwabhanan Sports Complex. Joel?
Yep, I will cover it. So in your packet is an easement map. As you're aware, from our last meeting, we approved a development agreement to extend the fourth sheet of ice for the Cornerstone Ice Center. As a result of that expansion, there's an extension of utilities that's required in order to provide service to that expansion. So there, there is a proposal to extend a twelve foot wide easement through park property to connect to the cornerstone. There is an approved map and a approved easement document in your packet. This item did go through park board this past month with approval for, for that easement. And I'll answer any questions you might have.
Make a motion approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the right-of-way agreement for Cornerstone Fourth Sheet of Ice. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten F. Consider Discuss Act on an Intergovernmental Cooperative Agreement to Satisfy Eligibility for the Wisconsin Recycling Consolidation Grant for Calendar Year 2025. Mr. Burr.
Yep. This item for you is something we have been doing for a couple of years now. Kind of standard language, you know, working with the local municipalities, you know, the, the local counties. Some, you know, basically standard language that we agree to, to work with, work with them on the recycling grant application.
I'll make a motion to execute the Intergovernmental Cooperative Agreement to Satisfy Eligibility for Wisconsin Recycling Consolidation Grant for Calendar Year 2025.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on item ten F. Any comments, concerns, questions?
Just a couple of quick comments. I don't know if you've seen the recycling guide. They do a really good job on the recycling guide. Also, the Better Bin Smartphone App is really cool. If anyone hasn't gotten that, that's something that they have available too. And then the website for Waste Wizard is another good informational thing that they have out. So it'd be good, I think, to get it out to our community members a little bit more, those, especially those two. I wasn't aware of those. I mean, I've seen the Tri-County Recycling Guide, but there's some good information letting people know what they can recycle, what they can't, where they can, and all of that, so.
Yeah, thanks for the comments, Tracy. We do have those links on our webpage and the village webpage.
Oh, you do? Okay, shoot. Good. Okay.
Okay. So we have, oh, we already did that. Motion and a second, right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Ten G. Consider Discuss Act on Preauthorization for an Ambulance Order to Replace Current Ambulance Three Eleven. Estimated delivery, spring of 2027. So before you go into this, chief, I have a question.
We can't answer questions at this time.
Are they going to sell it to us for what we order today?
They're gonna, we're gonna try and do it the best we can. You know, there's going to be things that obviously go up in price a little bit, but doing it today obviously gives us a, an advantage financially as well.
Okay. Now I'll let you do your spiel.
Yeah, well, I'm not going to really go into a spiel. I mean, this is part of our capital improvement plan and our vehicle replacement plan. As you can see, that this project is going to take about two and a half years to complete. So I'll let Commander Murphy, who's in charge of our, uh, replacement on this vehicle, go into a little more details of the specifics of it. But just know that it is part of our capital improvement plan.
Is that typical that it takes two and a half years or is this really unique?
It just continues to take longer and longer.
As I say with the supplies and stuff.
So to answer the timeframe question, this is about par for the course. Looking at our previous ambulance that we purchased, I was reviewing the materials for that. That order was signed and made in December of 2021, and it was received in mid-year of 2023. So supply chain issues as far as ambulances go has not improved and prices unfortunately have gone up. So the ambulance we're looking at right now replaces a 2010 ambulance, our current ambulance Three Eleven. Projected service life on these ambulances is fifteen years. So this ambulance will reach its service life next year and go beyond that until the projected delivery date of this new ambulance, if approved tonight. The total cost for this project is going to be an estimated $435,000, and that has been broken down to the ambulance itself and some of the equipment that is necessary to put that ambulance into service. So to give a brief rundown on the prices, the price for the ambulance itself, the recommended purchase offer from Braun, a quote was obtained pursuant to our village purchasing policy. That price is three hundred and forty-one thousand, six twenty-nine, and that covers just the ambulance and the chassis itself. As far as additional equipment necessary to put that ambulance into service, that's listed under the loose equipment costs. That includes a power load, which is essentially like a forklift for a patient cot, a power pro cot, a powered stair chair, a mobile radio, and a computer modem and associated equipment for a mobile data computer within the ambulance. And then miscellaneous loose equipment, for example, bags and other supplies to put it into service. Now, with this particular purchase compared to the last ambulance that we purchased, that one we specked out in December of 2021, the price has gone up substantially. The chassis price, just for the Ford chassis itself, has increased from about fifty-five thousand to seventy-nine thousand in this current quote. So a forty-four percent increase. The body and build, so the box that goes on the chassis, the patient care compartment, from 2021 to 2024, that cost has increased forty-six percent from a hundred and seventy-nine thousand to two hundred and sixty thousand. As far as the loose equipment, so for example, in the previous ambulance, we ordered a power load, so the forklift system. We were able to reuse a power cot, so we got off a little bit cheaper on that one. But looking at the prices for the power load, that forklift system, that was a eighteen percent increase from twenty-two thousand to twenty-seven thousand from 2021 to 2024. So unfortunately, the market forces are not being very kind to us, and that's the amount of increase we had just in the span of a few years from when the last one was locked in on the purchase order to the quoted price here in 2024.
How competitive is it out there? Is it like, how many, you know, how many places can you get an ambulance from? Is, that's got to be hurting you too, I would think.
It does. And one of the things we look at as far as we want to have an efficient ambulance fleet, an efficient fire fleet, an efficient police fleet, one of the things we look at is what type of ambulance meets our needs. So that's one of the main concerns is what type of ambulance. We could certainly get a, a van-style ambulance for a lot cheaper. However, that's a lot less capability. Those are generally not used for paramedic-level services. We could get a van chassis ambulance, which is what ambulance Three Eleven is right now. However, that's not as robust, that's not as good a patient ride, and that's also not as spacious. A van-style ambulance with a box on the back also has limited options as far as potential reuse of that box. So that's the reason why we've been converting our fleet over to a truck-mounted chassis. So with a Ford truck chassis and then a separate box mounted on the back. So right now, two of our three ambulances are of that style. The one that we specked out here is of a similar style and really achieves a uniform fleet, both in, you know, the construction of the fleet and then also the interior arrangement of those ambulances are going to be substantially similar and more robust than what we had previously with the van cab and then the box added onto the back of that.
Do they last any longer since you have to pay that much more? Do they come with tires, Brian?
They come with tires and they'll even toss in a motor. But looking at the, how we would like to structure this purchase, if you'll notice, we did space out some of these items over the next few budget cycles, and this was part of our capital improvement plan. So for example, in 2025, as far as the project goes, 2025, I would like to have us acquire the power load system and also the power cot along with the powered stair chair. Reason for that is when we do this ambulance spec with the dealer, when we make this order, we have locked in that price for the chassis and for the box on that ambulance. Unfortunately, we're not able to lock in. Unfortunately, we're not able to lock in a 2024 price for all of the loose equipment that goes into it. So for example, the power cot, the powered stair chair, and the power load system, we can put that into the spec, but we're not necessarily going to be able to lock in a 2024 price for a 2027 spring delivery. So as we look at that, and the best way to handle that, and speaking with the dealer, what other services have done is to purchase those items ahead of time and then leave them at the dealer's warehouse until the ambulance is delivered. In my opinion, that's a little bit wasteful of those three items. Two of those we could actually put into service and start using sooner than that. So we could have a benefit from those items out of this project as early as we receive them. So.
Don't all of our three ambulances have those now?
Correct. All of our ambulances right now do have a power load and a power cot on there. However, those are an older model. And one item that could benefit from this, until our new ambulance gets here to put this in there, is our special event UTV. So we do have a place for that. That also does give us a, a spare cot if we have an issue with any of the three cots that we do have in service right now. Another issue that is a point of concern is we're finding that as things get more technologically advanced, one of the ongoing operational expenses is batteries. So if we can have uniform batteries across our various items of equipment, we're finding that to be pretty beneficial in the long term. And when we talk about the stair chair and the power cots, what we're specking out here for the newer model stair chair and the newer model powered cots would be the uniform batteries. We do have a powered stair chair right now, but it uses a different battery system than what our current power loaded cots have, because our power loaded cots are of a older model. With 2026, we're looking at purchasing some of our longer lead time items, so to space those costs out into 2026, computers and the mobile radios, mobile radios especially, we're finding them to be a pretty long lead time item, so we carve those costs out to be handled in 2026, so that we can have them in stock and in hand for a 2027 delivery, because we found that with our squad cars, for example, that lead time on the radios has delayed our in-service time for squad cars. And I'd like to avoid that as best we can with getting this ambulance in service in spring of 2027.
Brian, ordering that stuff earlier than when the delivery date comes, are there any updates that happen with this equipment? You know, like, is there a better piece in two years than what you're ordering right now? Or are they pretty much standard through the market?
So this is, that's a good question. There are periodic updates, and by doing it this way, we are actually catching a newer updated model. So we are getting what is the updated model.
What is the newest?
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
You're looking for a motion on this?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the pre-order for an ambulance.
Ambulance to replace the current ambulance.
In tandem.
I'll second it then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the pre-ordering of the ambulance with all tires, steering wheels, motors, and everything that comes with it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Ten H, consider discuss act, resolution R nine one dash two four, accepting the partial completion of public improvements to Phase Two Highland Ridge Estates Development Project.
The Highland Ridge Development Agreement was entered into by the board and the developer in January, January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, as part of that development agreement, we are required to update the board as to whether there is completions of public improvements, sanitary, water main, storm potter wanted, et cetera, storm potter, storm water pond, et cetera, excuse me, checking with staff that has been completed. So according to the, the development agreement, a resolution needs to be brought forward to the board, accepting the partial improvements. And then after that has been done, an addendum will be made, releasing the escrow back to the developer. So staff is recommending that the resolution be granted, and if there's any discussion on the specifics, Steve Burr has the answers.
Patrick, I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution R nine.
One twenty-four.
Dash one.
One dash twenty-four. Sir. Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept resolution R nine dash one dash twenty-four. Any further discussion?
So just to clarify then, the escrow will be held until the punch list items are completed, correct?
The escrow goes back to the developer, but there is a, like a warranty and a bond that we still have remaining that is still held until full completion.
Okay, so we will, we do have something to hold until they get all the punch list items done.
Yes, punch list items, the final lift of asphalt.
Okay, yep.
What that's for.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried. Ten I, consider discuss act on changes to the regular village board meeting schedule for October 2024 and the scheduling of a special village board meeting in October 2024.
So as indicated in the packet, President Kardasky and Trustee Paul will be having a conflict on October twenty-second, primarily for travel purposes to the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Annual Conference in Madison. As a result of their travel, if we can move that meeting up or earlier in the day on October twenty-second, that's desired. I think Mary was thinking two o'clock, noon, whatever, whatever you can do, there's no requirement. Yeah, just sometime during the day for that. And then, as was discussed when Green Bay Water was here making their presentation, we've completed our study with Rukert Milkie as it relates to capital improvement projects with the water, storm water, and sanitary sewer systems, and you've had presentations from both New Water and Green Bay Water on their rate increases. What we would like to do is have a special board meeting where we're just discussing those elements. Rukert Milkie would be here, kind of walk you through in great detail the financials for each of those three enterprise accounts and what we're looking for.
Oops, sorry.
If we can, Jeff, if we can schedule that for Tuesday, October eighth, again, that does not need to be an evening meeting, so if you'd like to schedule that during the day, that's certainly a possibility as well.
Will they get that done in one day as much as they talk?
Rukert Milkie?
Yeah.
Oh, it'll, it'll be a condensed conversation.
Oh, okay.
I mean, the, the information will be riveting, so I think it'll be hard for, for you guys to not want to talk about it in great detail.
I'll okay that right now.
Yeah. The October twenty-second board meeting, since I'm on the board of the League of Municipalities, I have an eight o'clock meeting on Wednesday morning down in Madison, and I really don't want to have to leave at like five. So that is why, if we can.
And I'm not available for the October twenty-second meeting anyhow.
You're gone? So you don't care what time we have to meet?
Do it whenever you want.
And it's the Florida already?
How about noon?
Noon on what day?
The twenty-second.
Noon? I don't know. Tracy, Chris?
That works fine with me. Anytime that day and anytime on the eighth will work for me, so whatever works for you.
Are we talking twenty-second or the eighth?
We're talking twenty-second right now, and you're gone, so you don't care.
Correct.
Noon's fine.
Chris?
I think I should be able to make it, yes.
Chris? Noon?
Yep.
Gary? On the twenty-second?
That's just perfect.
Noon? Okay, since Kelly.
Who's bringing lunch?
Since, I don't, somebody will.
I was just throwing a time out there to get the ball rolling.
Since he got, since Kelly suggested noon, I'm assuming noon will work for her, so let noon.
I'm sorry, I can't then. No, I'm kidding.
Noon on the twenty-second?
That's good.
Do we need a motion or?
Why don't we just, we'll pick a, a time on the eighth and then we can just do a singular motion, just make it official.
The eighth? What time on the eighth? When people.
What, noon again?
Does noon work for people on the eighth?
Works for me.
On October eighth?
Yes.
October eighth. What day is that on?
Tuesday.
Tuesday.
My Tuesdays are open for meetings.
Um, I think so. Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty? That's the Rukert Milkie presentation, you're going to want to be here.
Okay.
It'll be good.
Does noon work?
Works for me.
I should be able to.
Okay. So, so we'll do noon on the eighth?
It works good.
I do.
Okay. So now we need a motion to move the, have a special village board on October eighth at noon, and the October twenty-second village board will be at noon? That's a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, now, items for next agenda, we'll have that one item that we took out. Anyway, if you have anything, call the office. Number twelve, closed session item, during the meeting, the village board of the Village of Ashwabnan may convene into closed session pursuant to item A at number twelve. The village board may thereafter reconvene in open session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute, Section one nine point eight-five parent two, to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda. I need a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to go into closed section.
Okay.
Roll call, please. President Kardasky?
Yes.
Kelly? Trustee Service?
Yes.
Trustee Paul? Trustee Zerbal?
Yes.
Trustee Atkinson?
Yes.
Trustee Krieger?
Yes.
And Trustee Flukie.
Oh, yes.